Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming for this workshop. We're hoping to generate a lot of ideas. We have a copy of our 2008, thank you very much, comprehensive plan, as well as hopefully lots of good ideas on how we might or what we might want to see or the direction our town is going in. Peggy so graciously put this awesome map that all the dots show that our buildings are in town. And we are very happy to have Erica Buffkins. Is that, did I butcher?
Yeah, you're good, you're good.
From AVCO, which is Interstuck and Valley Council Governments. And that's one of the resources we use a lot through main municipal for grant information or for town issues or doing some town things. So AVCO is a big resource for us. Was the door closed and it didn't? Thank you.
Are those walk-in booths?
Yes. So, um. Hey, thank you for coming. So, uh, thank you all for coming. We are live on YouTube and we're gonna be discussing in a workshop format, planning for our town. And again, thank you very much Peggy for all the work you've done and the prep. And I'm gonna let, um, I'm gonna let you take it from here. And you let us know when you want us to chime in or information that you're looking for.
Yeah, absolutely. So first off, I just wanted to start off by saying where you guys are at in the process. Has, are you forming any sort of committee yet? Or is there just interest there? That's who I have here, everybody sat.
We've not formed a committee yet.
All right, great. That's even better because then I can let you know from the start. So I always like to just give my rundown of what the comprehensive plan is, just because it's relevant to know the intention of it. So it's a long-range planning document and identifies the goals and desires of the community over the next 20-plus years. So through the comprehensive plan, there's different components to it, of which there's a vision statement that the town Comprehensive Plan Committee, whoever chooses to be involved, forms, which is the intended path in which the town would like to go. In addition to that, there are state goals, policies, and strategies that are to be incorporated into the plan, as well as conditions and trends and analysis. So that's where the required data that has to be in there and the analysis that needs to be answered in going through the plan. So I'm not sure if you've read Hartford's latest comp plan or not, but there are various different chapters within there. So in order to start the process, what the town does is usually reach out to me and I request an updated state data pack from the state. So what they do is provide us with an online file that has information for each of the chapters within the comp plan. So it's the minimum data requirements to start working on writing the plan. So then from there, usually once we have our data requested, we then move into forming a committee. So the committee is meant to be made up of nine to 11 people that are appointed by the select board. Though the Comprehensive Plan Committee will be the people that lead the effort in writing the plan and bringing the public in and involving them in the planning process. It's best to have a committee that's made up of a variety of people from different backgrounds and have different interests so that way you can attempt to include everybody within the town. You wanna have those differing viewpoints so you can try to cover all of those processes. So I can read through the topics quickly. There is a decent list, but I might as well read them out loud. So we have our historic and archaeological resources chapter, population and demographics, economic information, housing information, transportation information, recreation information, water resources, natural resources, agriculture and forestry, public facilities and services, fiscal capacity and capital investment plan, land use information, local concerns and issues, emerging topics of interest to the community such as resilience, inch-friendly communities. And then the largest component of the comprehensive plan is the future land use plan. So within the future land use plan is where you designate where you want rural preservation to take place, where you want less development. You identify growth areas, which are the areas in which you wanna push development in the town. So that way, it aligns with the vision that you have created for the comp plan. So I am just gonna go through some of the overall reasons why we like to have a comprehensive plan. First of all, I just think it's a great exercise for the town. It gives everybody a chance to get involved with the future of what's going on. You get to have those conversations that might not happen otherwise so that you can prepare for the future. And a lot of cases too, you'll, you'll bring things to life through reviewing the comprehensive plan and coming up with the new chapters that then can lead you to, maybe we can change ordinance a little bit. And this would help push that in the right direction. So some other things to do with that. If you have a plan that is found consistent by the state, it means that it's found consistent with the Growth Management Act. So the state provides a self-assessment checklist that really is just the requirements that are within the Growth Management Act. I can send everybody these sort of packets and information that I'm talking about right now. It probably seems rather vague, the long documents, but I have a wealth of information. So I'll try to collect everybody's emails at the end in the case you're interested in getting some documentation. I can follow up with that after. So another thing, like I said, about why it's good to have a consistent comprehensive plan that just through the Growth Management Act is that it does make the town preferred for grants. So it gives you the opportunity to be pushed forward through that and it helps guide state growth-related capital investments towards locally chosen growth areas. So it helps get that funding at the state level when you channel it towards the growth area that you designated in the comp plan. So I know growth areas were discussed at some point in a, a little bit here in Hartford and some potential changes to them. What I can say is in order to change where your growth areas are located, must be done through the comprehensive plan in order for them to be recognized. So in that case, I like to say that's one of the most important parts of the comprehensive plan because you really get to look at where you want to channel your growth, funnel your growth, and then be able to be preferred for those grants and help guide the state capital investments. So I like to say that, you know, steps in general. I start off with doing this introductory presentation. It's a little vague, everything seems like, oh, all right, we don't know where it adds. One of the first things I like to say to do is just read through the previous comp plan, get a feel for that. Think about if there's any pieces to it that you know in particular do not make sense anymore. You know it needs to be changed, maybe make a little marker of that. Going from there though, I forgot to talk about the actual bringing the comp plan committee together. So like I said, it's nine to 11 people, but you typically start off with a introductory meeting that I'm giving now. And then you have the select board appoint those nine to 11 people. And then from there, start reading through the plan, like I said, and making some rotations. And the best thing is to just read it with your views of the town in mind because that's really what this plan is supposed to be shaped around. So going through that for things you think should change. From there, we typically talk about doing inventory and analysis update. So part of that is going through the language that's in there. But as an inventory update, that's really going through the data that's in the previous comp plan in combination with the checklist that the state provides so that you can update those required data components. But I'll start, I'll stop just talking at you and ask, does anybody have any particular questions about the process thus far?
So are you, you said that the, the growth areas can only be changed by a comprehensive plan. So in effect, our 2008 plan that is no longer consistent is still legally binding in terms of where the growth areas are.
Yes. I just checked in with that, with the state given LD 2003 and the implications that it has. A lot of towns weren't sure, okay, if we haven't updated our comprehensive plan in most cases it was 2005, 2009. And I double-checked with them and they said, yes, they're still valid. So that's really one of the biggest pushes that I've been going around and talking about by now is that the growth areas are only gonna become more and more relied upon. So these, the plans that may or may not have sat on the shelf in the past, I think it's, it's gonna be a lot different now with the way, you know, the direction that the state's moving in and especially the things with LD 2003 coming out allowing increased density in those areas. It's really the time to dig in and look at the implications of where you want the growth to be so that you can keep the character of the town we want today.
Yes.
Did I hear you say like 2005, 2009? So I guess I'm wondering about other towns. Is, is our 2008 plan like desperately at the bottom end? Or are we kind of on track?
I have to say, it was, there were like different waves of when people updated their comprehensive plan. Right now, there are literally 12 other towns that I'm working with to update their comprehensive plan that was done within that timeframe. Some have been done, you know, more frequently. There's another wave that came through that were done in 2015. So they hold their consistency status for 12 years. So those are the ones that are, okay, they wanna keep up their consistency. They're now coming back. But now that the comp plan is becoming more relevant, I think a lot of towns are reapproaching it because of the implications of how.
Does that mean that ours was consistent up until 2022?
Yes.
So even though we didn't do the follow-up and we didn't follow the plan after we set up, it's still.
If it was, did you have it reviewed for consistency by the state?
It was accepted.
It was accepted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says it right at the back in the comprehensive plan.
Good, yeah, because there's usually that letter. AVCO has a way of doing these things. Yes.
So how much has growth management had changed since 2008? If we were consistent in 2008, if we did nothing and just sought to be consistent, would we still end up being judged consistent? Or is there enough changes that occurred that might affect that evaluation?
That's a good question. The predominant thing that I would say is the data. So the data in the plan has to be within 18 months of when the plan's gonna be submitted to the state. So that factor in itself. And additionally from that, I think a lot of towns aren't aware of the data findings until they actually start doing it and realize, whoa, this is something that we might have to deal with. So yes, there are gonna be plenty of pieces of the plan that will not change very much. So think historical and archaeological resources. I'm sure there are a lot of things that are gonna be consistent in that section where you may wanna add more. But it, from the way things have changed, pieces of the Growth Management Act haven't changed dramatically. It's just the, the nature of the town and the way it lends itself changes over time, really.
So what you're referring to is demographic data.
Yeah. But also like water resource data and historical data, there's a.
Well, history is history. How much has that changed?
Well, that's why I said that one really is one that isn't changed very much. But then demographics, populations, but once again, those are just really, those aren't the heart of the plan. The heart of the plan is the future land use plan and the capital investment plan. And that's the way that the state looks at it. The way you wanna, how in-depth you wanna go in the other sections, that's absolutely up to the town, whatever direction you guys wanna take it. I think the most important part is that future land use plan and the capital investment plan, like I said. You know, certain pieces of the data get updated. Like you said, population demographic is, it is what it is. But then we have, you know, there'll be certain, I've seen different water resource studies that have come to the surface when I've gotten data requests for other areas. So while many half the pieces will stay the same, there are new things that come up. And like I said, I just really think the main thing is the future land use plan.
So the 2008 comprehensive plan took five years of forming the committee until it was accepted. But you're saying the data has to be less than 18 months old. So we should get the data now, get into our plan and then get a new set of data and make sure the data's still somewhat updated?
It's more so when you start the plan process. So we're getting it now, it would be, you know what I mean? If it's a little bit past then, they wanna see it within 18 months. So, you know, you're getting the data, you're starting the process, that's one thing. Rather than you're getting the data, you wait here to get into the process and then you go from there. So there's a little bit of area.
Because the 2008 plan was based upon 2,000 data. So we're almost 25 years behind in analyzing data.
And I'm sure there is some things that.
I've done research before.
I love that. Any other questions for now? Yes?
Could you elaborate on what you mean by saying that our 2008 plan is legally binding?
The growth areas that were identified in the comprehensive plan are still considered growth areas in the eyes of the state.
But they still require, presumably zoning ordinance to become.
They just have to be identified in the plan. I've seen plans that are 30 pages long and they have a draw on there, but those are still their growth areas. They were found consistent by the state. What are your questions?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm trying to think about what the, what the growth areas, I guess, are simply those areas that allow higher density. But unless we have an ordinance that says the, so for example, our building lots ordinance requires a three-acre block to build on. Because our 2008 comprehensive plan says you can build in this part of town, one acre, one acre lots. You can't if our ordinance doesn't allow it.
You can through LD 2003 now. That's why things have changed.
But outside of LD 2003, you would not have an acre.
Yes, but that's why, like I said, the push is here now. I mean, whatever's in your zoning code's in your zoning code, but through the state, that's what's recognized. So through LD 2003, regardless of the fact that your minimum lot size is that. I won't get into that for copy-up right now because that's, that's a lot to explain on top of all the comprehensive plan requirements. But that really is why they're coming to light now. So in the past, I don't think people focused on them as much because like you said, if they weren't implemented in an ordinance, there wasn't anything further through the town. It was just kind of an open-ended statement where now they're being helped to a little more.
The comprehensive plan was accepted at town meeting as an ordinance, was it not?
Well, that's, that's true as well.
So it is actually the comprehensive plan ordinance. Am I right, your guess?
Yeah, it was accepted at town meeting. They had special town meetings.
So that's the thing is your ordinances are meant to further the sentiments of the comprehensive plan. That's how your ordinances are supposed to align with that. So for them to be effective, they should be carried out into an ordinance of some form. And typically, your ordinance would reference them in some sense. I haven't particularly looked at your ordinances for reference to that, but sometimes they'll reference protected areas as identified in the comprehensive plan and things of that nature. Yeah?
I think for the most part, our ordinance does not say anything about it.
No, they don't mention it specifically. But what I have done in preparation is I went through all your headings and I listed all the things that the state's gonna look for. And then I listed what the 2008 plan had and what the 1992 plan had to see that many of the recommendations from 92 were also recommended in 2008 and still have not been.
Been acted on, yeah.
Yes.
So that's a lot of, another big problem is, all right, so I'm gonna tell you now. I'm sure you can read the list of recommendations that are put into the last comprehensive plan and I bet you can at least pull out ten that are still relevant and haven't been worked on. And I know, once again, that's a common theme for many people in the state. But that's why now we're at the point of where they are becoming a little bit more viable and I think people are looking into them more because they're going to have more implications. It's fun, guys, the comments. It isn't as daunting as you might feel it is and I do think it's a good exercise like to align the town on where you want it to go. Everybody has their own opinions, but when you get them all in the same room and everybody's kind of, you know, having different thoughts on that, that's where the work gets done, you know?
How this actually came about is that, no, I'm, I'm the chair of the planning board.
Okay.
And because I'm, I'm the one to contact.
Yes.
So because of the LD 2003, I was trying to be proactive for the town to come up with a way to meet the new requirements. But it was voted down and all I did was look at that 2008 plan, look at our tax nets and define a specific tax laws. That's all the change I made. I just made, because they ruled like this and I wanted to know exactly which laws were involved. But it was voted down and the major objection which seemed very visible to me is that one of the growth areas was in right adjacent to the Bear Pond, part of the watershed. And that makes sense not to want to have growth there. And so that's why we kind of involved and we gotta change that to the growth.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, that really is the whole intent of this process. And it is unfortunate in this case that this has happened to a lot of towns where it was, here's LD 2003, it was like, whoa, we have to look at our documents first and see how this plays out, information lies. So you're in the same position a lot of other towns are where it's, it's time to go back and look at the growth areas. And like you said, identify those resources that are crucial to the town and make sure those are safeguarded and that you take what growth you want and you push it into a certain area.
That's why we've got maps and see.
Each town has its own natural form and to a certain extent, and I won't, you know, generalize for every town, but it is, it's always interesting to look at the development patterns just to see how the town naturally lends itself to the land and where people, you know, have developed over time. So definitely interesting to look at that. You do have a ton of water resources here. I was driving, I'm like, wow, how beautiful it was. So it's really important to make sure things are protected and to make sure you're analyzing, you know, where they're at and if you need to increase protection. And like you're saying with the growth area and that watershed, just taking the time to analyze that and explain why you're moving the growth areas is something that then I think the town would be more likely to accept and want to move forward. But then the ordinance changes because they'll have been involved in the process of making the comprehensive plan. Well, I have, I printed out 10 handouts, but I'm like really excited because there are way more than 10 people here. But I like just a quick. Like I said, I do wanna take down anybody's email who is interested at the end so I can send you my laundry list of documentation as well as I have developed a resource list that I always recommend everybody check out just as you're starting to get into the process. It's just the major links that you can go to to find data, information, et cetera, for the whole comp plan process. The state did just put out this comprehensive planning data mapping portal. And it covers each chapter of the comprehensive plan with interactive apps and data links should they be needed. And you can just search by your town too. So for me, if I'm doing development review applications, I'll look at that just to see certain resources and such. So I find it useful in my day-to-day and I know a few other people have that I've shared it with as well. So I can follow up with that list just so you can start taking a look at what's going on.
Are there new categories that people are looking at due to changes which are not on the current list? Thinking about, you know, stormwater issues and those kinds of things.
Yeah, that's definitely incorporated into the list of things we're looking through now. I know another big initiative that has been recently been introduced into the comp plan, obviously aside from climate resilience because that's, that's a given. But broadband was another thing that was brought up. So there are a few different pieces that have changed within. As far as statute goes, that's another story. The Growth Management Act is in the process of being revised. So that's a, that's another thing. But we're going with what's in there right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
We're sending around a name and email list so you can see that.
Yes, I was just gonna walk, I'll, I'll. My recommendation, this is just, you know, I know we're just in the introductory phase, but for those of when you start going into, you know, revising the comp plan, my recommendation is kind of to break up into little cluster groups to work on specific chapters. And then you can convene together and talk about what we've revised within the chapter and see if everybody else agrees with those changes. And then it, you know, it allows you to kind of choose what categories you might be more interested in within the plan and something you might have more information on to work on. So that's just a little piece I like to put in there. So the, once you complete the plan, what'll happen is it'll be sent to the state for the consistency review. If anything needs to be changed, they'll send back a letter. At that time, those changes will occur. And then we'll send it back, et cetera. And then you'll bring it back to have a public hearing on it and then have a town meeting. So public hearing, town meeting, town votes on it. Was your plan accepted by the town in the previous version?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, provisionally.
Okay.
Because it was, it was accepted as a work in progress. Not that much progress was made, mind you.
It was still in there.
Of course, one of the things that we do know from some data that Peggy has provided is that at least 25% of the towns in the year increased or turned over by at least 25%. So we have clearly a considerably different pool of people than we had then. So whether towns' yields are the same as they were back in 2008
Yeah, yeah.
It's right in the comprehensive plan, December 13, 2008. The revised comprehensive plan 2008 was adopted by a majority vote. Townspeople had a special town meeting with the state. It's quite simple.
Those are on it. Sometimes I have to chase this information down so I'm not being, it's right here, ready to roll. I like, I really think this is the perfect time for this to be happening. There is a certain sense where I am happy that, you know, it's unfortunate that the ordinance got voted down, but now it kind of gives you the time to really dig in on the comp plan, get it where you want it to be, make sure where you, the town is going in the direction that you want it to go. So that way, when these, these new laws come in and things like LD 2003 come down, you know that the town's gonna be moving in the direction that you want it to.
Yes. Our committees that develop the comprehensive plan generally selected for.
So they're appointed by the select board, but it's typically the town will solicit members for the comprehensive plan or whatever way they wanna work it and put something out in the newspaper or multiple different ways. Announcements on the town website, which is why I'm excited. I also saw there was a committee already, that's why I had to ask because there's so many people here. So that's great. I know that was even a challenge in itself for a lot of towns I've worked with was the nine to 11 members. A lot of them were like, he didn't even get five. So you're doing well already.
Part of the reason I kind of brought this to the forefront is the ordinance that. is the ordinance that was created for the planning board and accepted by the town states in specifically that the planning board is responsible for preparing the comprehensive plan. So I was wondering, you know, how does that work? Because the state statute say the select board can designate a planning board to do the comprehensive.
Yes, yes. It's just for the selection of the committee members.
I see.
The initiative itself is usually taken on by the planning board. Just by nature with most towns that I've worked with. And obviously, the select board's going to participate in some matters. I just think that brand new components kind of lend itself to that. But it's always, it's a mixed bag depending on the town and who specializes in what for certain. I'm still very impressed by the map. I can't get over that.
Well, I have a prior one. This is, I mean, I didn't make a big one, but this is the... Oh, great. This is 2019, 90 data from the first comprehensive plan. So you can kind of get over there and see where growth has actually happened. And in this early, it took me months to find this old plan.
Within there, for certain.
And the old plan said that the growth area was the division of the watersheds from the great ponds, they didn't want growth in that area. They wanted it in the other, the... So I guess that would be the western half of the town that was not in the large shares of the great ponds. So it's changed quite a bit.
That was in 1992?
Yeah, this was the 1992 plan. And it was based upon 1990 data. There's a whole file cabinet in there from the data they collected in 92. And there isn't anything similar to that for 2008. There's a lot on. There are two of them. Leanne's not here, but she knows how many hours I spent in the town office looking at everything that we could find in 2000.
Well, shoot me an email again because AFCOD lovely has kept all files and communications since the inception. So we just have the file cabinets of everything in there. And all of the original hand drawn maps too, for reference. So if that ever comes up for anything at any point, definitely get in contact with me. Because it's nice to be able to track them from the beginning. I've had people call me, I think something was added to our shoreline map in 92. And I'm like, well, I actually have that map sitting right over there. And I can take a look and figure out what happened from there. So definitely follow up. I can send you whatever I can find on it.
What about getting the large maps? Because on that website, you can look at getting the habitat.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They ordered the large maps, but I clicked that, but we didn't get them. It's actually ordered by the town.
Usually I get them.
Probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the map there. And then I typically, I'm sure there's maps within the plan that AFCOD did. So I do the mapping at AFCOD too, so I would update the maps here.
It's, we did this before. We have a large public library for each chapter.
That's great.
We had, we had, we even just like, you can get, you can break up into little groups to talk about chapters and that sounds, that sounds dope to me compared to how we actually did it. Because we had, I mean, at least as many people, I would say, for each chapter.
Well, that's fabulous. And honestly, that's good to know about your town.
I don't think you can still pull that off.
If you can, then go for it. Because I certainly...
That's how we did it in the past.
Yeah.
We included as broad a cross section of the town as we can, as we can.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. It's whatever way you feels best to organize it. I've just seen people do that in the past. But if you guys want to sit down and work through chapter by chapter altogether, then go for it. You know more will come out that way.
It seems so.
What can change here about backlots that are landlocked? And they're contiguous with someone who does have deed right away? Do you have any previous documentation about how to actually do that fairly without taking away property lines and stuff? Do you have much of that data?
I'm gonna have to think a little bit. Are you talking about using a backlot to get rerunage access?
Yeah, if I was comprehensive planning of at least the 2003, I believe it's to allow growth for people who are landlocked. You can't get out to the road.
Yeah.
But they have a neighbor that they're contiguous with. They properly unwind that.
Yeah.
But they can use their right of way now, the new LD 2003. And do you have any suggestions on exactly how to do that?
I need a little bit more context, just, it varies depending. I'm, right now, I'm thinking you mean ordinance provisions, but I don't think that's exactly what you're asking. If you, if you mean documentation on LD 2003, you bet I have the most documentation on LD 2003 possible. And I personally wrote a model ordinance to help towns in getting started with the whole LD 2003 scenario. So when we do eventually approach that again, I'm available to assist with that too.
I think what you're referring to is the building lots ordinance discusses backlots. And I think when we transfer property because of the ordinance, you have to have deeded the right of way to the backlot. So you have a front lot that's on the road, but you have enough acres to divide it for another lot. So when you divide it and you make a, you go to the registry of deeds and make a provision for that new lot, you also have to write into, I guess it would be your own deed that you pass this right of way to the backlot.
I understand with new growth, but I'm talking about the people who have already have a...
Oh, you mean like traditional, like way we got?
Yeah, but they can't get out. You know what I mean? They can't develop that law.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And now this new law says that they should be able to do that, especially if they have a neighbor that can get out, even if it's a discontinue process.
That was one of the big issues when we had, when we discussed this in the hearing. That was one of the big issues. People said, well, that's just to take you. And they were outraged with the idea that they'd have to share a right of way with somebody else who had a backlot. Correct me if I'm wrong. I seem to remember that that was an issue for some people.
And that's seriously something that needs to be hashed out. Well, like just hearing that, I didn't know personally that was an issue here. And that isn't something that's very, I... It's a particular issue to Hartford in my mind, just in this setting. I'm sure that this is...
I'm sure it's a lot in other places too.
Well, that's what I was just gonna say, exactly. I mean, Maine has a lot of large parcels and I'm sure there's a lot of people that have landlocked. I'm just saying that, you know, it's something that needs to be talked out in the comprehensive plan.
I think that comes under like past traditional use, like people could use past and things like that. And then we moved into the era where everything was really tied down. But that's, this has become an issue. You might, I might have more information on how to address that, I don't think. That's not, I'm sure it's not unique to Hartford.
I just meant from when I were, you know, in working with the towns I've been working as of recent. I mean, there, a lot of towns have backlot provisions within their ordinances. So if you guys were interested in knowing what other towns do as far as ordinance regulation goes, I could certainly provide you examples.
Well, that's a great idea. Also registry of deeds might have some information too. Do you mind? I'm just gonna brainstorm how to solve these problems.
That's it. And then honestly, that's why the comp plan process is important because that's when all of these things come to light. And most of the time, it's issues that are, everybody knows are issues, you know? And so it's nice to have everybody together to be able to talk about them and come up with solutions rather than ponder the mid-fib律.
The other thing about looking at how other towns have done things is in fact, we're probably not the only ones with the same problem. And there's no sense in reinventing the wheel.
I'm big for that. And when I found out that the recommendations from the 1992 plan were still similar recommendations in 2008, I found the list on the website in Maine where you can access all the comprehensive plans. So I made a list of towns by population. I looked in my, oh, I guess that was your odd Wikipedia. And so I started looking at maybe ten different towns of similar sized property to see how they address similar issues. Because part of the problem is that the recommendations are former committing by ordinance, former committed by ordinance, and that's not happening. So I wanted to see if anybody else had any other ideas of how to get things accomplished. That's honestly, a lot of the time, what I do too. It's the best way to do it. Like we are saying here, there are a lot of common themes around Maine. It's nice to be able to compare with other people and what they're working on because if it's effective, then hey, like you said, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can use some of that language that we know has been successful incorporated into our ordinance. So. Well, if you, if you guys would like my assistance in helping, you know, form the committee, give people information, whatever you would like, please just keep in touch and help out for certain. Just want to mention that.
What have you seen other communities our size doing so far? You mentioned that for the day. But communities our size, you know, what are they choosing for like acreage because of LD 2003?
Yeah. I wasn't gonna get into that, but that is something that is huge. I can absolutely say that Hartford is identified as throughout, you know, other planners throughout the state as one of the towns with the largest minimum lot size. So that I know has been something that's a little bit of a, I hear digs too even, that it's just gonna prolong and enable sprawl within the town if you're having three acre lot, three acre lot, three acre lot. But I can tell you guys how you'd like to run your town. I can impress my opinion on you to a certain extent. But I do think it's a little bit more effective to have a little bit more variability in lot size. I am forever for the protection of farmland and any natural resources to the utmost importance, absolutely. But I do think it makes sense in certain ways. It'll help protect the natural resources more if you allow for less land in minimum lot sizes in certain areas. I think overall, that'll help provide, you know, big contiguous pieces of land instead of having your landlocked parcels. You can have things, you know, conform to a certain area and then keep nice farm parcels intact. So I know that for certain is something that, in my opinion, should be assessed absolutely through the comp plan. So I'm happy that this process is going on. It was something that I was gonna recommend anyway. But again, that regardless of what, if you guys were to make that decision, if that was something you'd want to move forth with, it would have to be done in the comp plan anyway. So it's a perfect time.
I just, I just wanted to clarify. The comp plan recommended small minimum lot sizes for the growth areas. That was never written into an ordinance, so it's not standing in the town at all. It was just a recommendation. So until it was, it's only written that way.
It's making sense, the connection now. I'm like, oh, I see what you're both saying.
Oh, yes, yes. And part of the reason I did this plan is because it hit me that we've just had three acre lot sizes lines on all of the routes that we have in town because in 50 years, it's not been a half mile added to the number of miles of roads we have in this town. It's been stable and have not been any roads that a town maintained because the amount, the number of, the mileage of roads was listed in the 1992 comprehensive plan. So I was able to see that that was stable. So I was just trying to figure out, so what has happened without having a small lot size? And everybody's putting up those three acres all along the roads that we do have? And some towns, a lot of towns have two acre minimum lot size. A few of the really rural towns mention having five to 10 acre minimum lot sizes in the rural areas, which we couldn't do now because we're all broken up. Three acres on the roads.
No, it's true.
Yeah, somehow, I'd say, you know, that I'm doing sprawl by increasing density in certain areas only works if you then increase the minimum lot size in those areas that aren't higher density. Otherwise, you still have the same three acre lots throughout. So I don't see how you're reducing sprawl by increasing density in some area, whatever that area may be. So now you have higher density in that area, but you still have three acres everywhere else. So unless you increase the minimum lot size, say, to five or six acres, you still have that three acre sprawl everywhere else.
But now people coming in would have the option to have a lower density, so you wouldn't be furthering the issue that's in place now.
Yes, but I mean, with respect to the idea of reducing sprawl, you haven't.
I don't know what you want me to retort to then? I'm glad to hear your opinion, though, thank you.
Do you think it's reasonable to be able to go back now and designate rural areas and change them in the lot size to much larger? I mean, everybody who's there now would be grandfathered in. I mean, this is kind of discussion.
I'm not advocating that that's what you should do. I'm simply making the point that by increasing density in a particular area, you're not gonna reduce the sprawl if you still have three acre lots everywhere else.
But maybe a smaller lot size means a less expensive lot and less, you know, so the cost divided is...
There's many implications, yeah.
I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing against. I'm simply, I'm simply pointing out that sprawl is sprawl as long as you keep three acre lots outside of where you have created more density.
Well, part of the land planning process, things that I've looked at is smaller lot sizes are a way to put your sprawl in certain areas. I mean, that's kind of one of the foundational concepts.
Planning school for that exact thing?
Right, that's one of the foundational concepts, so.
I see what you're saying now, so it's just, yeah.
I was just playing with, I didn't wanna do it. You lost her, where are you? Pardon? I'm trying to, you lost her, where are you? Changed theirs to try to defeat sprawl by actually one side of the road was two acres and the other side was five. And to check how that worked out for them. Michael Dahl, our assessor, lives there. So we have, where do you access? Who works there? Who moves it on? Hmm? Yes, it's all, that makes sense. When it works, we move it on. You gotta hand it back to the movement also.
Sure, sure.
They certainly know this about us.
I'm, like I said, I'm excited you're doing this process because even already as we're here just talking about introductions, there are some real issues that need to be talked through and handled by everybody in town so that you're on the same page. So I think these things are only gonna keep coming up again and again. And the, you know, once you start to address them all, get to somewhat similar consensus on them, I think it'll just assist in overall function for the town. And I'm here to help in any way I can.
When I was looking at some of the plans of other towns, I found interesting maps that we didn't have, but they said they were created by you, so we can use you to, we want to...
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Because the 2008 plan indeed over the address agricultural resources because the town was not, was changing so much. But now there's the local food movement. People are starting some more small plots, I think. So that might be something to see if we get those marked on.
Absolutely. I know the exact layer of data that you're talking about, so we're ready.
Well, I did come to Dave's question once, well, Hartford's a bedroom key. Well, it is mostly now. The old, in the 2002, 1992 plan, they focused a lot on economic growth because they saw it as a community where people were not having opportunities to make more money. And this is totally changed, which is why the biggest growth areas are right along the major routes that go to the major service centers.
Yeah, tell us the story. I think you guys are gonna be really great at bringing together a good plan. Already having the energy in the room, I feel like there's a lot of work to be done. But there's some good people to be working on here, so. I'm grateful for Hartford. But like I said, I'm happy to help in any way that I can. I'd like to be here and assist, obviously. It's just a passion of mine to be doing framework. So if you ever have any questions, even if it's just some random, you know, where can I find data? Or if you just wanna hash something out theoretical, whatever, please email me. I appreciate it. So I'll send out an email to all of you now that I have your addresses and include some of my information. And then that way you'll have my contact information too. But I'm happy I got to come here.
Can we, I know you have a PowerPoint on there.
Yeah, we would be able to put that out, available on the... Yeah, we would be able to put that out available on the website, so if you can send it to us.
We'll have it out on the website, people can go through it.
Yeah, for sure.
It could come.
Yeah, absolutely, and any of the document, you know, training documents or anything, absolutely.
Yep. Is that the same one for June, or has it changed? You said the copy?
Yes, yeah, yes, this one. Yeah, but I have updated some of my other documents as far as like recommendations of data and, you know, resources and such. A lot's changed within the last few months. So it has become an easier process, I will say that. It used to be a lot harder to get the data, now it's pretty straightforward, so we like that.
We call Peggy, she's really awesome.
I was going to say, I'm like, some of the towns, we are right on. I'm going to have to call you to ask about the part here, please.
I was also just on fudgees for eight weeks, so I had to sit in front of the computer anyways.
Oh, I love that, yeah. Well, you were ready for this meeting. Any more questions? Yes.
So my idea was like, uh, well, I think it was like, uh, last year, while I was also coming back from Garden Drive, I sent like a holy crap ton of beer, and I want to see if there's a way that we can, uh, well, I want to see if there's a way that we can get a town of Hartford into, into the awesome expanding archery zone.
That's something we do.
Yeah, it is something that could.
Yeah, there's a, I don't know anything about that stuff.
Yeah, because down in Auburn, it's like, uh, I mean, it's like a freaking, uh, from here to freaking Timbuktu to go to Auburn.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there was a lot of, now you're, in my house, you have, uh, three dozen, two bucks in Hartford.
There's, that is such great information to put into a plan of something like this. It should be in there, then you can use that to then, you know, leverage some programs and get something going. I like it.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of deer.
Crazy, right?
I've seen a lot of deer.
Excellent. Is there any more on your schedule we need to talk about?
I can roll for my PowerPoint every time, I can't help myself. But is there anything else you guys would like to know more about? Anything that seems vague, I'm sure every, there's always something that seems a little vague, but ask away if you have any formal question.
Yeah, I have one question. Now, as far as acreage for our community size, is the state looking for a ratio between the new growth development and the minimum lot size versus the rest of the community? Is it just up to our discretion on how much growth we want as far as minimum lot sizes and?
That is, so.
It's totally up to us?
That is something I think should be an initiative from the town. You guys, the ones that live here, you want to see where the growth goes and you want to see how, what the outsides you want to be. So yeah, for me from the outside, I think, oh, yeah, three acre lots, that's huge, but for you that lives here every day, works here every day, drives here every day, you know, you might have a different feel for that than I do. And that is why it's so important to work on the future land use plan and have that thought process while you're working on it because it really could be variable depending on the town. Obviously, they're looking for growth to be channeled in some direction within the town. Um, if you look very deeply at the growth management act, there is an exemption from growth areas, but you'd have to meet a whole slew of other requirements. Um, but that is another component that is within the growth management act. Should you care to investigate that further?
Isn't it my, it's my understanding that that the state wants 10% under the land map or something like that to be, you know, a consistent growth zone, but a more affordable cost to grow?
That's what I was going to say before, is it's, they want to see affordability, not, the lot sizes and that in general dimensional standards, that's totally town. Um, as far as affordability goes, that is something that the state wants to see more of, but that's why they furthered that through LD 2003 and the implications that it has on the land use and dimensional standards. Because if, you know, in having bigger lot sizes, it's more expensive and then it becomes harder to, so it's that whole trickle down where they're hoping that requiring less land will then allow for more.
Can I be joking, you'll hear, are you promoting an opportunity economy I've heard so much about?
Yeah. Um, so because of LD 2003, you can build another house on your lot. And so if we have three lucky minimum lot size, then you can have two houses on the lot. That sort of de facto makes it a one and a half acre lot on some level, although my understanding is because of the three acre minimum lot size, if you decided to put your real estate on the market, you have to sell it with two houses on it rather than divide it up and sell that house and then this house. Is this correct?
So from my understanding of it, with LD 2003, there, there's the different parts of it, or you can do additional dwelling units and then the accessory dwelling unit. So there's a differentiation.
Right, I understand about that part. What I'm just not discussing the, um, accessory dwelling unit, which is the mother-in-law apartment.
Yes.
As it were.
Yeah.
Which could be in the basement or upstairs or attached or not attached or whatever. And this is one thing the trailer is not. But, um, which technically is a affordable house. But in any case, what I'm talking about is the second unit that you're allowed to put on that lot, which will be a house, the same, you know, it could be a three bedroom home or whatever you chose to put on that lot. It's only your, your three acre lot because that's what you have presumably. Uh, but doesn't that technically makes it two, one and a half acre lots in a way, except that, it misses my understanding. And correct me if somebody, if I'm wrong, that if you decide to put your real estate on the market, because of the three acre minimum lot size, you can't sell only this house and keep that house to live in, or sell both houses separately. You have to sell them both at the same time in the same year as they add.
So that is, it's, there's certain.
Is that MIA?
Well, I have some towns that have required that an ADU be under the same ownership as the principal dwelling unit. So that's why I was talking about the differentiation between ADU and principal dwelling unit. If you're doing an ADU, you don't need additional acreage. So you're absolutely correct in saying, yeah, it is pretty much taking it to one and a half.
By ADU, you're talking about additional dwelling unit rather than accessory dwelling unit? Is that, those are both like?
I know, accessory dwelling unit, that's ADU.
ADU, okay.
And so the additional dwelling unit has to meet lot size. So that's why I was getting into that, is there's a difference in differentiation between those two that if you're doing an additional dwelling unit, it has to, um, meet the lot size minimum. So, okay, you have the three, three acre minimum here. In that case, then you'd have to have three acres to have the additional unit. Because your ordinance did not pass putting in those restrictions, now anything could really be considered an ADU because there's no maximum size on ADUs. That provision was meant to be made by the town, so.
Right, we were going to, it had the article passed, there was a size.
Exactly.
Limit, there was no size limit, so that if I have more than, uh, more than the three acres, I could put a considerable sized building on that lot.
Absolutely, it's because the ordinance did pass, yeah.
And because of ordinance did pass, could I put, um, multi-family unit on my lot?
No, it's a joint, it's a joint, that's different, it's a joint. So are you actually saying that if our ordinance says we have a three acre minimum lot size to meet the LD 203, we're not allowed to put a second dwelling on this? You do the ADU, you do not allow to put a second dwelling on that same lot unless it has six acres, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That is, okay, yeah.
That was the most confusing part to many people.
That was clear to me.
Yeah, and I get it.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, I get it, I literally had to sit here and just hash through it in my own mind because when you look at it both ways, you're like, but what's really the difference between the ADU and the accessory?
But you know, you're going to have complication because if you go, if you go to split it to sell on, then you're going to have to allow the right of way. And then the right of way would make, one of the, if it was just six acres, would make one of the lots not large enough for, um, a minimum house size. But I did find out that, when I went through all of those things, that there are several lots in Hartford that have two houses on the same properties and property, and it's only the second house that is taxed. It's not, there's no land associated with it in the tax rules. And I looked into the deeds too.
Oh, is it, in this case, are those, is that second home actually a street?
No, no, I think they were just like, you know, somebody had, they built a house for their son, then we had started having zoning and the house was still there, they don't want to have it. They sold the house to somebody with no land associated with it because it was separate deed.
So, but how's it, how's it not?
It says zero land, if you look at the, uh, there's no land, zero land if you look at the, the.
So somebody can own the house and not own the land?
Yeah.
But are you suggesting that there are houses in the town of Hartford that are not being taxed?
No, no, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm just saying I found examples of second houses because I looked at those pictures and tried to figure out, which is, which are houses? Because you can't go by there says value. You can find a $10,000 building that is a house that people are living in. So I had to look at the pictures. Arts. No other requirements to put two dwellings on one piece of land? By putting two septic systems and two wells, whatever, because if you, if you go to sell it, you have to have a separate well and septic.
That's one of the main pieces of it, is making sure that you meet the, the septic capacity and you have total water. Those are two huge things with it. So those are really the determinants there, is that that's kind of important.
I know, because we have a camp across the street, and once it's two camps, but they shared one wells, so we had to sell them together.
Yeah.
To divide them, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's why, so a lot of towns that I were working with were like, you know, I could see somebody building a house, having their house or whatever, they decided to put an ADU and then went down, oh, we're going to sell the ADU. So they were like, we don't really want to see that happen. So instead, they just put in the requirement that the ADU or the principal dwelling, like, they have to be under the same ownership. And they also put in that either the single family dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit have to be owner occupied. So there are little pieces to do that you could, you know, a lot of towns that have, um, you know, Airbnb's and things of that nature were terrified by this. So having those requirements in that, you know, owner occupied, they have to be owner occupied and that the owner has to be living in one of those dwelling units was another way to kind of move on that.
So there's going to be a question about homeowners associations. We have a, we have a live one called Pine Choke. It was developed in the late 80s by the Patton Corporation. The state of Maine got involved extensively, you know, with the Forest Reserve, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and, um, they made, uh, resilient, uh, stipulations on those pieces of property. Now, are those going to be held accountable to that standard still?
The HOA, any provisions that are privately made still apply.
Okay, that's what it's all about.
So it's, if you do it on your own deed, if you write in, we don't want any, whatever you do in private terms, that's fine.
About the second house, we usually talk about this in the planning work. You have to get a building permit to build a second dwelling. And to do that, you have to have adequate, um, uh, storage for that, that second unit. So most times, since you build your first house with three bedrooms, you go to build a level three bedroom, you probably want to need a home with septic. And you have to have a 20,000 square foot minimum, minimum lot size for each new house because at that time, the septic, for the septic.
Yes.
I'd like to re-just your statement that if somebody owns a three acre lot and we have a three acre minimum, a three acre minimum lot size, they cannot, I guess I, there's plenty of other requirements that have to be put together for us.
I haven't read your ordinance, but if that is what the provision is in there, then.
No, we don't have, we don't have ordinance that addresses that.
We have, uh, the ordinance that has to follow for the template.
The template, are you talking about the, the model ordinance that I gave?
Yes.
So in relation to that, what are you, are you saying that?
The kind of the model ordinance, if somebody has three acres and they want to have a second home on that three acres, that's allowed.
That's with the ADU part. So that's the accessory dwelling unit, the additional dwelling unit is what would require the three acres. So it's, I tried to spell it out separately within my model language just because this was also confusing to me, the differentiation between an additional dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit. So I put in there, um, in my provisions that I can share too, um, that any additional dwelling units would need to meet the subsequent lot size requirements. But the ADU is exempt from the lot area requirements.
That, after that, that's a fine point that I didn't even recognize until after we gone through our, our revision because it just wasn't clear.
That corollary.
I mean, because I, I looked at the state stuff, I mean, they, they came, they came out with several, you know, awesome things about how to interpret it.
Exactly, exactly. I have to say, it just took me sitting there and thinking through it and helping towns work through it with doing the ordinance work. And then now that the ordinances are all set in place, seeing the implications come down and hike a little bit is what's even more interesting, even getting into then, you know, people with ADUs in relation to subdivision and things of that nature. So it does get a little, but, you know, it's, it's difficult for interpretation. I absolutely agree with that, but we're, we're all wading the waters together.
So if that's proven true, with LD 2003, you don't have a lot size?
If you don't have a minimum lot size already, then it wouldn't. I'm not understanding subtly what you're asking.
LD, LD 2003 allows people to have a second lot on a town identified lot size.
A second dwelling unit?
Yeah, because that's, I'm actually right, it almost invalidates the purpose of the law because any town will have a minimum lot size. And I, my understanding was that any designated building lot in the state of Maine that is allowed to have a dwelling can now have a second dwelling in addition to the, the accessory dwelling.
In addition to the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, that was my understanding, how it meant, what it meant.
That's my, let me bring up my documents.
That's what they told us in the workshop.
Yeah, that's, everything I thought that said, you know, all the examples and sort of flow charts show exactly that.
Yeah.
I mean, otherwise, it's absolutely no different than, for example, our current ordinance, right, you have a lot of second dwelling if you had six acres.
Yeah.
So.
So that's, you know, you went to a workshop, didn't you? So you should be well-versed in this.
Well, it's also, it's dependent upon whether or not there's an existing dwelling unit or not. So that's the other thing. If you're to be building new ones, you're going to need the additional area, yes.
If you've already had one and it's already been there before July 1st of this year, then you can build a second home dwelling on it.
Yes.
That's, oh, we're going to have fun with that, huh?
And now I'm not going to talk anymore because I don't want to confuse anybody. I have a habit of doing that. It's hard when you do planning, you just keep thinking of new things and you're like, oh, maybe we can put that a little bit more.
So would you say that if someone else created, they can only have one house on it?
They have no house now.
If they have a house now, they can't have a second house.
They can't.
That's not for the law.
They can.
They can?
You said they can.
No, I just said they can't.
They can.
I'm not sure you said they can.
Well, she's talking, we're, we're down there.
I was going to say, I clarified between the vacant and the existing. So I was thinking, we, I, we were disconnected on the, whether or not there's an existing dwelling unit on the lot or we're talking vacant dwelling unit on the lot.
If you have three acres and you have a house on it, three acres, can you build a second house on that same three acres?
Yes.
And a mother-in-law apartment. Accessory.
Yes.
For your side of the room.
And if you could afford, you could put a hotel.
But what if someone has a grand Catholic lot that's not three acres?
Yes, it could still.
So this was something I actually had to ask MMA because technically it says you can't make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming. So I was like, well, if it's, if it doesn't even have the requirements for lot area, how is that increasing the non-conformity? Their interpretation of it is that if it's a non-conforming lot and you're looking to do something within the dwelling unit, that is one thing, but if you're increasing the non-conformity by adding additional, you know, area. by adding an additional, you know, area to the lot that's already substandard, then that, that won't be allowed.
Oh, it wasn't substandard when that place was built.
Yeah, exactly.
They made the rules after, that's why I'm just.
Yeah, so those ones are grandfathered and they can, they can have the, the ADU, but it just can't be an expansion of the structure to increase the non-conformity. It's such baby language, I know it's, I, I even feel confusing when I'm saying it to other people, so it's kind of frustrating sometimes.
Ooh.
Yes. That, that wouldn't apply to shoreline, right?
Yes, so shoreline zoning provisions are still in place. Anything that would be, um, in ADU is just looked at as a regular old dwelling unit. So the density provisions do not apply in the shoreline zone.
Unless it's in a growth area.
Which is why you gotta change the growth area. Exactly, yeah, that's exactly it, yeah. This is why I keep talking in circles, because the one thing leads to the next thing and then that leads back to you.
Yes, but the shoreline zone provisions supersede the.
They do, they do, they do. Yes, so regardless, you're still gonna have to meet the shoreline zoning requirements as far as lot area frontage.
And setbacks, setbacks.
That too?
That's the big, that's the biggest part, is the setbacks.
You're, you are, you're certainly right. Well, now I'm gonna send you all my LD 2003 documents too, since we got a little flavor for that too. But anytime you're curious about things, please call and ask because it's good for me to even talk through them more again too because as I'm talking, I'm like, oh, that's why I was like, you know, we have to differentiate between vacant and whether there's an existing dwelling unit because that makes the whole thing different, so. I'm sorry for being confusing, but.
I know.
Thank you, what try. What is your email? It's e and then buffkins, B U F K I N S at apop.org.
And this is the mail that, what did she say, that's something that's on the front?
Thank you.
And just a piece of information, everybody that has discussed this with me is looking to put an old home, the mom and dad, so as soon as they take the bucket, they sell them all home and bring back the table.
So, yeah, that, that's hard, so.
So is it a yes or a no? Can we do it?
Yeah.
Of course they can.
Well, now there's also a new provision that came out that manufactured housing is allowed anywhere where a single-family housing is. There's a lot of new things that have been coming down in the sense of allowing housing. So I think if someone were to contest that, that probably, I would think they would probably allow it.
Well, how I would specify this page that more than one person could say.
Needs to be even clearer?
Which is very rare to do it because otherwise you're stuck with the wrong option.
Listen, you're not wrong.
There are exact other things one could do with it. This is true.
Yes. It's a good group here. Usually I'm trying to pull information out of people, like, yay, questions, that's right. Anything else I can, you know, lab about right now, like any other topics? I'm having to.
Entirely different, not me.
That's fine, right.
So my only goal for Hartford really is to get us more organized specifically with moving to computer database for all of our, all of our documents.
That's right.
And I really have not seen that in comprehensive plans I've reviewed that addressed at all. Are you aware, any towns are trying to address that?
I can't think of a specific example, but I think that would be such a great thing to incorporate in there. It's the management of the town, the general record keeping and things of that nature. That makes absolute sense to me. And I can tell you for certain that I am grateful for the record keeping at APOP because it has been so consistent that I now still have access to the plans that are from the 90s. So the quicker you get on board the organization, you can. Let me try to take a moment to lean in.
So, business, I can do.
Yes.
Are you going to be coming back as we have our meetings?
I'd be happy to if you'd like to have me. That, that's up to you and the select. Great. I'm sure you'll be right back. Getting coming tomorrow. Like, listen, I like working with you guys, I'd hope that I'll come back and help start it up and process.
Where do you live?
I live in Norman.
Not so very far.
Exactly. Just a little. Thanks for having me, guys.
It was a great time here.
Yeah, it's great to be here. Now I've been like in touch with a few people, um, you know, different levels and I'm like, we're all in one room, but I like that, so. Excited to get to know each other. And you will hear from me the email tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Same time, Mr. Artier.
Oh, thank you. It was a good reminder, thank you.
Yeah, there was a lot of them.
Always one of not being.
Our home is over the door.
My wedding day last year.
That's one of the, I, I just feel like I've seen them multiple times. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back to her.